Go on, Amy's getting nervous. I forgot my real glasses, so you guys are gonna be in for a treat today. All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners Workshop on Impact Fees. We're gonna go ahead and get started this morning. Who would like to volunteer for the invocation? All right, you're gonna make me pick. That would be fine, Janet. And then, Mr. Dixon, would you come forward and lead us in the pledge after that, please? Please rise.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us this day. Be with our leaders around the country and around the world. Help us in our county to make wise decisions for the people of Citrus County. And we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk. We're seated, it's 9:03.
This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 23rd day of June 2025. In attendance are Chair Rebecca Bayes, First Vice Chair Diana Finnegan, Second Vice Chair Janet Barrett, Commissioner Jeff Kennard was here, Commissioner Holly Davis, County Administrator Steve Howard, County Attorney Denise Diamond-Lund.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, it looks as though we have some additional information.
My thing on here? Yes, B1 Presentation Update by StanTech. Additional information, B1 Draft Extraordinary Circumstances Memo. And that's all I have, please.
All right, thank you. That leads us right into the beginning of the workshop on the Citrus Impact Fees. And the presentation is gonna be by Peter Napoli? Napoli? We're gonna let you take it.
Okay, Commissioner, Board. We're still looking for Peter. I confirmed on Friday that he was gonna be here, but we can, I can either stall for a few minutes, or I can see if I can find him in the hallway. But this is the first, I'll stall, maybe Joanna, see if she can find him in the hallway. This is the first of two required workshops for an increase in, or a change in impact fees, which will be an increase for us. I've sent out the reports that we've received from Peter along the way, and it's showing an increase to just over, proposed increase to just over $13,000 for a single-family home, for example. Some of the, and if Peter somehow has a flat tire somewhere, we can go through the slideshow and carry on the workshop. So I don't, I don't wanna delay that, so, so, and Chuck is here representing the school board. And they had a preliminary hearing as well, and he can have, he can bring forth the recommendations from, from the school board. So anyway, this is the first of two required workshops. Some of the increases are, exceed 50%. And in order to, to increase by more than 50%, you have to show extraordinary circumstances. That was one of the supplemental items that you received, showing how expensive life is now compared to five years ago, and the amount of development that we have now compared to five years ago. And the basis of, so that's, that provides the basis for the extraordinary circumstances. Things are a lot different than they were in 2020, before COVID and before the Parkway. So that makes, that makes some special circumstances in Citrus County. Okay. I'll, I'll wing it.
Okay.
We can go ahead and do the first slide. One thing to note, and I'm not Peter, but if Peter were here, he would say that the impact fees can be used to expand, but it can't be used to, for personnel operations or maintenance. So it can increase capacity, and specifically, when we're talking about parks, roads, libraries, it allows development to pay its own way, instead of the county having to use ad valorem fees. We fed, we being the county staff, the consultant, tons and tons and tons of data from building permits to, to county assets, to capital improvement plans. So everything that's in this study is 100% Citrus County-based. I know that there was some feedback from, that I got from some stakeholders that said, well, why are you using other counties' information? We're not, it was 100% Citrus County information. They do use other counties as comparables to see where we stand as far as impact fees. You saw that in the report, and you'll see that later on. So this scope was to recalculate from the previous study. It was basically the same, same premise, same standards, same statute, but it was updating based on all the new information. Reese, I think I'm stuck. So this is just an example of what was adopted in 2021, and as you may remember, in 2021, we only, we only, we, the county only agreed to accept 50% of the recommendation for schools and transportation, which about 18 months ago, we brought back and raised to 100% for transportation, but they're still collecting at 50% for schools, and that'll be important later on. Sorry, Reese, I think I broke it. And then, so this was the adopted, and it breaks it down. So every dollar that's brought in for impact fees. I don't see anybody named Peter still. Every, every dollar that's brought in for impact fees is divided up. So a nickel goes one place, a dime goes another, and you'll see the breakdown of all the different places that, that impact fees go. A portion of transportation, schools, parks, library, fire, EMS, law enforcement, public buildings. And you can see, as currently adopted, it's about $8,000 for a single-family home. And then this is the comparison that they used to show the average from about a dozen different counties, some adjacent to us, some not. But we're collecting at about 7,900 for a single-family home. The average is about 12,500. And you can see one of note that I wanted to make sure to mention today, Manatee County, they just adopted a new impact fee last week, and it's over $30,000 for a single-family home. So you'll see, that's the one all the way on the right. So obviously, you can see that counties are having to take note of all the growth and all the infrastructure that's required to, to cover that growth. And instead of the county absorbing all those costs, they're making development pay its own way.
Eric.
Yes.
So I see Sumter County. I believe, I think Marion County just adopted a new fee schedule last week or two weeks ago as well. Just for point of clarification, I don't think these are always comparable apple to apple.
They're not.
Sumter County is, is, can you talk a little bit about that, so people understand when you get into how they're funded? I know Marion County has a lot of MSTUs and BUs for law enforcement, so this isn't, you're not comparing something that's equalized.
Correct, so you have MSTUs, MSBUs, you have cert, you have other taxes, like a 1% sales tax that, that some counties have that we do not. Some counties, most counties have concurrency, and we do not. Okay.
And then you have independent districts.
Yes, yes, so.
Which, that, that's a completely different.
So Citrus County, one of the, it's one of the few tools that we have in the toolbox, other than ad valorem taxes to, to help cover infrastructure, is impact fees. Other counties have more different tools than we have, so you're, you're absolutely right, it's not apples to apples. It's the one tool we have. So if, if there's a county that has smaller impact fee, they probably have revenue sources coming from other directions that we do not.
And that, that's the only reason I wanted to point out, because Sumter, that's a very unfair comparison.
Sure, sure. And then I believe this consultant also just recently did Hernando's, but Hernando did not do the 100%. I think they, I think they adopted less than 100% of the recommendation, so you'll see there's right in the, right in the middle. Okay, the impact fee, the way it's written in the statute is you, and I mentioned this earlier, you can increase by more than 50%, or you have to phase it in over years, unless you show extraordinary circumstances, is which, is which we're attempting. It's required to have two publicly noted workshops, this being the first one, and it requires a supermajority. So if you're, we're going to increase it by more than 50%, it requires four out of the five of you to agree to do that. There is a state statute that's been amended, which requires a unanimous vote, and that could become effective in October. So if you choose not to do it now, or you wanna do it, say, a year from now, it would be a little bit of a higher standard, it would require, require all five to say yes. Okay. Okay, our consultant got mixed up on the time, he can be here in an hour, but we'll probably likely be wrapped up in an hour, so we'll, we'll get him again next time. We'll make him be twice as effective on the second workshop. Reese, do we have any more slides, or are we? Sometimes.
Twenty slides.
Oh, wow, okay, well, yeah, let's, let's keep it going, okay. Showing extraordinary circumstances, you can see, you can see a chart showing that we're growing at about a 10% average, as compared to the southeast, compared to the national average, far exceeds the growth, and all you gotta do is walk out your front door to, to see how quickly we're growing, how fast things are changing. I've been here for two years, and when I got here two years ago, the, the target was cow pasture and a pile of dirt. So obviously, things have changed really fast in Citrus County. The number of permits that we issue are far higher than our trends years ago. Now, it's pretty consistent, we average, we average about 2,000 single-family dwellings, or just under that over the last five years, but you can see that that's double what we averaged the five years previous, so, and then you go back to the Great Recession, far, far less. The cost of everything is extraordinarily high as compared to 2019, and you can see the huge spike. And all you gotta do is go to the grocery store to see how expensive things are. So again, we're making the case for extraordinary circumstances in Citrus County. I don't know why it's just working sometimes. And then, this provides the calculation and the method, and how they came to that, how they, how they came to these numbers. I don't wanna dig into the calculations too much. The big drivers and the big, the big changes, why going from 8,000 to 13,000, are largely based on schools and transportation. Those are the biggest drivers, and the biggest driver for schools isn't necessarily that the recommended change is that great, it's that you're currently collecting at 50%. So if you do an increase, plus you collected 100%, that's where you're gonna see a lot of, a lot of the change. And it's not only single-family. Fee schedule is for any type of use. Single-family is not calculated by square footage, but, but commercial development is, so there's a person, certain price per square foot, as opposed to a certain price per dwelling unit. And then you can see the proposed and the percent change, and the ones highlighted that have the largest percent change, and again, schools and transportation will see the biggest jump. So this table provides, it's, it's the same data that you've already seen, but it shows the newly calculated or newly proposed impact fee, which has Citrus County right on average with the surrounding neighborhoods, or with surrounding counties, although, as Commissioner Bayes said, it's not always apples to apples, but we're, we're right in the middle. As proposed. And then schools, we're currently collecting at about 2,000. It was proposed for 4,000, but as I noted, we're only collecting at 50%. So if you collected 100%, which is the 4,000, plus the additional recommended, the proposed fee would be around a little over 5,000. And I think, I think Mr. Dixon can speak on schools, if you have any questions specifically on, on those. And then transportation, so we were only collecting at about 1,600 up until about a year and a half ago, where we upped that to 100%. So we're now collecting about 3,800 for a single-family house, and the proposal is just over 5,000. So as I said, that and schools are the biggest increase. And this just shows the proposed, if you're doing multifamily. It's an increase, but it's not as big of an increase, and it's not as big of a dollar amount. Big jump in commercial. So that big box that came in, that came in a year ago, would only pay 2,000, or they would pay over 5,000 now. And that's, that's development paying for itself. As you know, a big box would have a significant impact on the road network and expanding future capacity. How it works, so this is the first of two, two workshops, if the board adopts it, and I believe that'll be the second meeting in July, if my memory serves me, then there's a 90-day waiting period before it becomes effective. So it won't become effective the day that the vote is taken, but if, before the five of you agree to do the increase, that's over 50%, then there, the 90 days after that day is when it would become fully effective. If you feel satisfied, the extraordinary circumstances.
Commissioner Barrett.
I have a question, I wanna make sure that I'm on the right page. Okay, impact fees are for new.
Correct.
Which means, if we increase the transportation impact fee, it's not gonna get our resurfacing done. What it is gonna get is 491 widened, or it's gonna get 41 and 200, those type of roads. How many of those roads do we actually, I know we need 491. How many others do we actually need in order to, to move in the positive direction that this county is going with the number of citizens we have coming here?
So it would, it would be, you're correct, it's only to increase capacity, so it's not to resurface, repave, repair, any of that, it's, it's to expand capacity. And that'll just be based on, on where we have the growth of, and, and where we need it. So if you need to provide additional lane on a highway, then we can, we can use impact fees to, to pay for that, because that increase, increases capacity. So any traffic improvement can use traffic and transportation fees to, to increase capacity so more vehicles can pass.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett, just so that you're aware, it would be just for our local roads, not state.
Right.
41's a state, 200's a state.
41's a state and 200's a state.
Right, so like 491.
So it would just be 491, or 486.
486, Rock Crusher, Venable, roads like that.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Cardinal, yeah, okay. Well, this way, people understand that it's not for, you know, if they're sitting in the audience and they're thinking, well, this'll get our roads resurfaced, it's not gonna get our roads resurfaced, and I want people to understand it. But it's not going to be a tax on our present citizens, it's gonna be on the new ones coming in.
And Commissioner, you triggered a, a thought with asking that question, is if you're buying an existing house, no one has to pay this impact fee, it's only for new construction. So.
That's correct.
If you're building something new, then that'll be part of your cost of, of moving forward. But if you're buying an existing home or selling an existing home, no impact at all.
Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
And that's because the impact fee has already been paid.
Correct.
When it was built. The question I have is if we're running, what, around 1,900 new homes a year?
Yes.
Okay, so that's just shy of 10 million for transportation alone. Have you run the numbers on what the current tempo of retail space would end up netting us with the full, with this new figure?
I don't.
That would be a really interesting figure to have, because to Commissioner Barrett's point, I think she's trying to make sure that we don't over-set the impact fee based on what we need to widen, but the cost of widening 491 is so enormous in and of itself that 10 millions a drop in the bucket. So the retail would be very much, I, I'm just getting hopeful that maybe we have a way out of this mess.
I will ask our consultant to watch this video on YouTube and have answers to all your questions at the next public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? All right.
All right, thanks.
Good job, Eric. So at this time, we're gonna open it up to the public. If anyone from the public wishes to address the board, please come forward, you'll have three minutes. Please don't all rush at the same time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm a little nervous, sorry I don't speak well in public, but I grew up in Pasco County pretty much.
Oh, name for the record, please, and your address.
Kevin Livecap.
And your address.
It's 3532 South Belgrave Drive, Inverness, Florida.
Thank you.
Anyway, I worked for the building department in Pasco County for 22 years. I watched all of the major growth there. When we went from two-lane little road, if you're familiar with Pasco County at all, they went to four-lane, and it wasn't two months, they went to six lanes. I don't know why they didn't do it all at once, but they didn't. Anyway, the bottom line is I watched the growth. At one point, we had almost $20,000 in impact fees in Pasco County. Never slowed the building down. We couldn't, they couldn't build them fast enough. But they also, as they developed, they got land donated by the developers for fire stations, libraries, parks, park and recreation centers, and I will say that Pasco County had probably some of the finest libraries and parks and recreation centers that I've ever been in. People that used to come from out of county commented always on how good our parks and wrecks were. There was a special fee that we passed many, many years earlier for, that went only to libraries and parks and wreck. I know that probably in this county, it would be very difficult to get through at this point in time. But I would say that the impact fees are very important, and I would make them fair, but as high as you can make them. Because if the growth is coming, then it needs to be done, because without it, it makes nothing but a mess. But it never slowed down Pasco's building. We had, I don't know how many, I'm trying to remember how many permits we would do a year in single-family, sometimes I believe it was 5, 6,000 a year or more, I'm, I'm gonna guess, I don't remember what it was, but we had lots of apartments near the end of my career there, and it just, of course, they've destroyed the county, quite frankly. I mean, there's nothing left of it, but, except there is no, nothing but roads and houses, but that's another story in itself. But I would just encourage you to look forward, make the developers pay for what they want to do, because they make the money and then they leave. And it's important, and don't let, because we saw it, and I've seen it in Hernando County, which I lived in for a while myself, the builders ran the commissions. Whatever they didn't like, they put pressure on them, and a lot of things did not get done that should've gotten done. So that's really it, I lived it, I watched it, and you could probably learn from some of that.
Well, thank you, thank you for being here, I wanna applaud your tenacity for being here this morning and speaking now.
Well, I hope it works, every time I move, I get further north. I grew up in Clearwater, went to Pasco County, Hernando County, now I'm here. Next one may be out of state, who knows? But anyway, I'm trying to stay ahead of the growth, but I'm not doing a very good job of it at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna close open to the public. Board, we're looking for a consensus today on what your desires are.
I would propose that we, that we, or I would support that we raise the impact fee to the proposed levels, based on the study.
I would as well.
I concur.
I concur.
You got a 5-0.
So Commissioners, we have it scheduled for the second required workshop, and then in another morning, I'll make sure our consultant knows it's a morning meeting, and then that afternoon, it's your regular session, we'll have a formal vote, and we'll, if you have any questions, let me know, and we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep proceeding.
Thank you, Eric. You did a great job, Eric. You know what, Mr. Dixon, I didn't ask, do you have anything that you would like to add on the schools? You have to come forward, you have to come to the mic. I'd like to know what they decided, Eric had mentioned that Mr. Dixon would tell us that.
This is my at least fifth impact fee update, so I feel like I ought to say something. It wasn't my idea to have that job, but it, I can see now the importance of it, and basically in the school system, we're seeing the same growth the county's seeing. And basically, in the school system, we're seeing the same growth the county's seeing, primarily in the elementary grades. And I know there's some concern about new schools and not having them, but as you may know, schools have to be full before we can get approval to build another facility. And where we're looking at right now is rock crusher, because of all the growth in the center part of the county and the southwest part of the county. So, we're looking at adding a wing to rock crusher and redesigning that site in a few years. After we rezone the Citrus Springs area to move some of those students farther south down to Inverness and Floral City, we're going to expand rock crusher. And that's primarily what we're going to use impact fees for, is elementary. And then, the upper grades, we are flat in our enrollment, as you may have noticed in the paper the last couple of days. But what we're trying to do is create some opportunities for high school students to bring them back into the brick and mortar schools. So, one of the things we're going to be talking about is a public safety annex in La Canto, where we could perhaps partner with the sheriff and maybe the fire chief and have a public safety training facility, and expand our academy in Crystal River and capture some of those students. So, we're looking at lots of innovative things, but it's very important that we have impact fees to meet the needs of our elementary grades.
And Chuck, just for the public, tell us why the school can't, why it has to be at 100% capacity? Kind of walk through.
Well, it basically, in order to expand a school, they want to make absolutely sure that you can fill up a new school. So, you can't really populate a new school with 10% of a school. You have to have more like 60%. So, in preparation for building a new school, you have to maximize the capacity of the other schools, maybe have some portables, so that you can get your enrollment high enough to justify that expense, which is about $40 million, or $40 million plus, not counting land.
Commissioner Barrett.
All right. You say, you know, we're going to reallocate our students to different areas. My question is, you're removing and retaking the students from Citrus Springs down to Inverness and Floral City. Do you ever take into consideration how long those little kids have to be on a bus to and from school? Or the fact that you're breaking up communities where children don't, like, the kid over here goes to Floral City, the kid over here goes to Inverness? They may live across the street from each other, but they don't go to school together. So, now, they don't have the kinship or the friendship that you would have if you had a community school like we have with the Citrus Springs, the two schools we have in Citrus Springs currently, where those kids go to that school and those kids go to that, and they're friends. Do you ever consider that? You know, it, it, it boggles my mind. We will probably have kids on the bus at 6:30 in the morning.
We do take that into account. Basically, the, we try to keep neighborhoods together, and we did that in Beverly Hills when we rezoned part of Beverly Hills to go up to Central Ridge. We try not to do that until we absolutely have to, and then we move them in chunks, and we try to keep their bus commute under 45 minutes. So, that's one of the reasons why we can't rezone the southwest part of the county is because all of those schools are full. So, we have no place to send them. So, we're going to have to have portables in the rock crusher area because of all the development that's occurring in Crystal Oaks and in and around that area, La Canto. So, we're going to add a wing there in a few years to take in some of those students. And then, when we get enough of them, then we'll build another school up in Pine Ridge next to the YMCA, and then we'll take away those portables that we put in rock crusher. And then, after that, we'll move on to Citrus Springs and probably build something up around Central Ridge. And it may look totally different than what we have now, because, you know, we could have a charter school up there. We could have students who are taking part-time brick and mortar and part-time virtual. There's all kinds of things that are going on with the, the PEP program, the voucher program, and we're going to try to recapture some of those students in our system by offering things that you can't get in homeschool. And building a school or building a curriculum now is like very challenging, because it's almost like the transfer portal. They like to move around. Homeschool, there's an ebb and a flow. So, they may go out this year, they may come back next year. So, we're trying to deal with that.
Well, my question is, do you think about the biological needs? You're taking a five-year-old and six-year-old and putting them on a bus for 45 minutes, and it might be more than 45 minutes, and they're bouncing around with their friends. Don't you ever think that there's going to be accidents on the bus, and the bus drivers are going to have to be, you know, trained for accidents? And by the time the kid gets to kindergarten, they're going to have to, you know, have things change, you know, clothing changes and stuff? To me, putting a little child on a bus like that, it's not good. You know, I, I, I could see maybe taking third, fourth, fifth graders and moving them out and making an elementary school just a primary school, kindergarten first, second, you know, so that this way, you take care of the students. But, you know, I know we have to move them because they're overcrowded. But to me, the, the schedule for buses, I mean, I see the buses coming home by my house at 5 o'clock at night, and that's with kids from the middle school. And the one comes home at 5:30. Now, they're a little bit older, but when you're taking little tiny kids and moving them down, that's a lot to ask of the little kids and the bus drivers.
Well, we try to minimize the time they spend on the bus, and I'll definitely make Ms. Farmer aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Finnegan.
Hi, Chuck. I was, and it might have been me that missed, so I just wanted clarification. When you came up on the slide that Eric showed, did the school board go with the $4,000 new impact fee or the 5,000?
Well, the, the school board's currently at 50% and of 4,000. So, the actual increase this time is 29%, but because we're at 50%, then it would go up 157% from what it is currently. And that, while that sounds like a lot of money, it's really based on construction costs. That's what we're seeing, because some of our projects, I do the capital project planning, goes up 20% in one year, and that's what we're looking at.
I'm, I'm fine with either, but I think that you're saying the 5,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we'll, we'll adjourn. Thank you for being here.